Utah, SoCal County, Rich County, and then southeastern Idaho. Bannock, Caribou, Lenida, Franklin, Fairway County. So appreciate the opportunity to be here today. Just wanted to give a quick business update. Am I good until nine fifteen?
Yeah.
Okay. I want to leave a couple of minutes for questions, so I'm going to blow through these slides pretty quick, and then if you have questions, let's address them at the end. This slide just really quickly shows generally our service territory in the state of Idaho. You can see it's not super large, but just a couple of things I wanted to point out. Line miles in the state of Idaho, we have about 10,000 between transmission and distribution lines to maintain and operate. We have 165 employees in the state of Idaho. And then just a couple of things there at the bottom, one to point out. Our corporate sponsorships in Idaho, we spent $100,000 last year, things like fares, rail yards, et cetera. And then also just our Rocky Mountain Power Foundation, for the last almost 10 years, we've spent about $800,000 in state Idaho. That's something I want to point out to you guys, it's available. If you have 501(c)(3)'s or functions that need some funding, some grant funding, that opportunity is available through our foundation. It's something you guys may want to look at. I'm trying to get that money out of the Los Angeles front in Idaho, so I'm promoting that pretty heavily up here. The main point I wanted to talk about today was wildfire risk, particularly in lieu of the wildfires up the road. We have up near, I can't think of our substation now, it's up but north. We had to de-energize the line yesterday, and so this is regulatory requirement for us in all six of our states, and we've had to put wildfire mitigation plans in place for each state. And that's something we've worked heavily on in Idaho. Just essentially taking and looking at long-term modeling through AI, we've been able to develop some pretty expansive programs to where we can look at certain criteria like population density, vegetation density, fuel types, pot fee, wind, et cetera, over the last 30 years, build a forecast when we think there's a possible wildfire situation that may require us to take more drastic steps to prevent or mitigate a wildfire situation. Part of that is, again, forecasting weather. This particular slide, you can see, this is something we send out every day during wildfire season, highlighting which areas in our six state service territory is undergoing weather-related events that could lead to wildfire. The green represents that it's clear that, you know, there's not a high risk, and as conditions change, whether it be wind, you know, high fuels, high heat, et cetera, or a combination of those things, we adjust that each day to show what kind of conditions we're facing in each of our areas, so we can take the appropriate steps. In Idaho, we have installed a lot of weather stations. We're planning to add an additional 38 weather stations in the state this upcoming year. And one thing I want to point out, they're rockymountainpowerweather.com. That's a site that's available to you guys. And I would assume, so Brett Myers on my side, he's an emergency manager, is working with your emergency management team in the county, and they probably have access to this already. This is a great tool. We developed through the company, and it's accessible to you guys. And at the end, when I get through the slideshow, I'll pull up really quick. I've got it pulled up on the web. You can take a look at it. But it's available. All those sites that you can see, the blue are sites that are being added, the orange are the existing sites. So we're rapidly expanding that footprint, so we can predict weather all over our service This just kind of goes through operational practices in the event of these conditionings worsening, or there already being a fire in place. So one thing with the enhanced safety settings, that essentially what we do there is, in our substation, we're changing the sensitivity to a system event. So if you have a tree limb that falls on the line, typically what happens is a circuit breaker will open, it'll close back in, it'll open again, it'll close back in until that fault clears, or the limb burns off. During wildfire season, we basically put that to one shot. So breaker will trip open, it'll stay open till we can go out and patrol the line and make sure whatever faults in place has cleared itself. So that's one change. So what that means is our reliability is not as good. So you're going to see, you know, the potential for more outages, possibly extended outages, and that's one of the challenges that we're facing, because we've been a company for years that has been pride ourselves on affordability, reliability, and all of a sudden during fire season, we're saying, you know, reliability could take hip, because we just frankly can't afford to start a fire. So that's the first step. The emergency de-energization, that's when we already have an active wildfire in place. For example, the fire up the road. Yesterday, we had to de-energize one of our transmission lines, because the fire was getting in proximity of our transmission line. One of the lawsuits that we've been named in in Oregon essentially stated that we didn't, because we didn't de-energize lines, we were liable, even though we didn't create the fire. It's just, you know, wildfire fires that were in the area, they felt were unsafe, et cetera. So we got named in that suit for several hundred million dollars, just because we didn't de-energize. So we're actively doing that now. We'll have, if there's a fire in place, we have spotters that will go out and determine, you know, if we do or do not need to de-energize those lines. In the case of the one up here, just this week, we've had to de-energize the line. So that's something that will be ongoing. And then the public safety power shut-off, that is an example of where the matrix fits. You've got high heat, high wind, high fuels, and they determine that there's a real risk of a wildfire starting. We don't anticipate that likely ever happening in Idaho, but we have already had one event in southern Utah two weeks ago. And that's where we're going to go in and say, there's the potential here, a high potential of starting a fire, if, you know, we have any kind of fault. So we're just going to actively de-energize these lines. And, you know, it could be 10 minutes, it could be for 10 hours until those conditions no longer persist. So these are measures that we're taking. It's, all utilities are looking at this now, frankly. It's a real challenge. We're looking at up to, you know, the potential for $800, or $8 billion of litigation in the state of Oregon right now. And Warren Buffett, our owner, has frankly said, you know, it doesn't make sense to stay in the utility business anymore. So it's a concern moving forward, we're just, we're trying to do everything we can to prevent us being, you know, the ignition source. So a lot of challenges. This just talks more about the safety settings, and that red square in the very top corner, that's the conditions, if met, is when we would do a safety shut-off. So some of the other things we're doing here, we've up our equipment inspections. We've spent, in the last two years, over $200 million on hardening the system. That could mean replacing poles, crossarms, non-expulsion fuses, some places undergrounding wire where it makes sense, or adding, we have wire that's actually covered wire, insulated wire, which is super heavy and expensive, so it's, it doesn't make sense in all areas, but some it does. So we've been doing a lot of that work, and then just vegetation clearance is another thing that we've really been addressing. Just the last point I wanted to make is just the engagement between the company and our community partners. That's a big focus for us right now, and as I mentioned earlier, Brett Myers, who works for us, I know has actively been moving around the state of Idaho, working with EMs in each county to try and figure out the best path forward in the event of any kind of fire mitigation issues, that he's there and he's communicating with your emergency manager. I spoke with Brett recently, and I know he's been working actively with your folks, your team here in Bannock County. So, quick, that was really quick. And I just wanted to show you the, this shows the weather. So this is our weather page.
That looks great.
Yeah, McCammon, he has a ton of data. I don't know either. Well, I'll send you the link, and you guys can dig in and take a look at it. My apologies. Okay. So I wanted to just give you guys a couple of minutes, if you have any questions. I know Mr. Huff, you and I spoke about your ordinance up here on Solar. I know we've had a few discussions around that, but I didn't know if you guys had any other questions you wanted to ask today that I could hopefully answer.
I have a couple, in regards to the power infrastructure. We had a company reach out for a proposal, and they needed 120 megawatts of power. Do we have the power infrastructure in Bannock County to support something that large?
If it was down close to Downey, in our popular substation, we do have the infrastructure. Our big John right now is generation, frankly. But we're looking at every customer request, load request that comes in. Generally, what, in some state of Idaho, anything above 30 megawatts has to be studied and put under special contract. In Utah, it's over 50, I believe, and I think it's over 30 in Wyoming. So if we do have a request come in like at that size, we would study it and determine what upgrades are necessary to serve that load. But generation is the biggest concern right now.
So I went to an Idaho power energy school earlier this year, and they said that Idaho is a net importer of energies. Is that consistent with what you're seeing?
Yeah, that's true.
Is that about 30% that we import?
That's a good question. I don't know the percentage.
But we are an importer.
We are, yeah.
And so again, and I don't know if you know much about Idaho Power's infrastructure, but again, in Bannock County, do we have the infrastructure to really support major manufacturing or things like that, or is our infrastructure a little bit behind?
I would say, again, if we're further south, where we've got some larger transmission lines coming through that corridor, down by Downey, I think it's available. The further north you get, it gets more challenging.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So this foundation, what's the process of filing for grants and stuff?
So we have a webpage on rockymountainpower.net/foundation. There's four grant cycles in the year. There's a health and safety, there's a STEM, there's a small capital, and like a cultural cycle, and they just have a deadline, so you just have to get into the appropriate grant cycle. It's really simple on that line application process you go through, and once you've submitted, it just goes through review process internally with us and our board. And then generally, most of the grants are $2,000 to $10,000.
That's my next question.
Yeah. And again, I encourage you guys to look into that. We've done quite a bit with the Food Bank up here, through the foundation, Idaho State, some state grants, so.
So is Tim Solomon retired?
No. He's, he got promoted, I guess. He wouldn't say it's a promotion, but he's my boss.
Okay, tell him hi.
He's still around, I will.
My question for you, what kind of handshaking do you do between you and Idaho Power? Because Bannock County basically is, we have both of them here.
Yeah.
Is there, I mean, your main transmission line, at what point do you maintain all of that, or at some point Idaho Power takes care of that?
So we do have some shared transmission with Idaho Power. Not a lot, but a few lines that are shared. But most of our distribution networks are, they either own that, they own theirs and we own ours. And then, yeah, it's kind of tricky on the boundaries, and we have this with municipalities in Utah and Idaho Falls, frankly, Power, where service territory is a little muddy. And generally, we just work through those on an individual case-by-case basis. If, you know, somebody comes in and they're on the boundary, there are some rules in place, in the state statutes that determine how we, who serves who. But, yeah, it's a little tricky, and we just look at them case-by-case.
Because, I mean, for instance, if there was a fire out on that BLM ground, I mean, that's right on the border between Idaho Power and Rocky Mountain Power, I assume both facilities would engage and do whatever they needed to do there.
Yeah, that's correct.
That would be a concern of mine, is there always is a wildfire out somewhere between McCammon and Incom along that BLM ground.
Yeah.
Even though I don't think it affects that transmission line, but it does affect a lot of our properties out there.
Right, and we serve, I think we serve all of the Incom, but there may be a little...
You're right, that's Idaho Power.
Well, that's Idaho Power.
You come halfway between.
Okay.
I think that was your dance property was.
Okay.
So we do have that Marsh Creek, we have that Portonup, that could be affected by both agencies. So if we just called one of you, or you had monitored, you'll handshake with the other one to make sure it's taken care of.
We do.
Okay, great. Thanks for me, thank you. Thank you for your time and the information. Appreciate it.
Good to see you, appreciate the time.
You bet. All right, Scott, and I just need to clarify, the agenda was amended, and this is from our, the attorney, the agenda was amended under Idaho Code 74-2044C. That's the emergency clause to allow us to do that amendment. So now we're legal.
Is that if we start talking contracts first?
Yes.
All right. When that, you want to come on? So when that runs, a couple of different events up at the venue. She, we currently have a contract with her to do the Idaho Junior Rodeo Association, and so, and then she does the Mike Johnson Vegas Toughest Qualifier event, and she does that usually during high school rodeo during that week. But she's swapping some dates and going to do a Mike Johnson on a date that used to be a junior rodeo date. So the venue is already reserved for her, however, we have a contract for the junior rodeo, not a contract for Mike Johnson. So that's the, that is the only difference. So the fees remain the same for that area, it's just that it's a different name, a different event. So, doesn't change anything that we do.
Is the fee a full fee, or is it a reduction?
Yes, it's a full fee. We technically don't have a fee for the grandstands. The fee was always in that, you know, $500 range is what it was, and so we kind of keep it the same, and then if there's a tractor rental, we'll throw that into the contract as well. So that's why you see this kind of ours.
Okay, okay. Any questions?
No.
Not good to me. Okay, I'll take a motion then.
I'd make a motion, let me go ahead and sign the contract for the Mike Johnson Vegas Toughest Qualifier event.
All right, we have a motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay. I'm ready to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Guy.
How you guys doing?
Good, how are you?
You want to introduce yourself for the record?
I'm Guy Nason. I'm the founder of Nason House of Hope. It's an upcoming high-risk use facility that we're going to be bringing to Pocatello. We're in the very beginning, early stages, we're a 501(c)(3), and we're going to be doing an event, fundraising event on August 16th.
Now, so August 16th, we have a concert. We've got a lot of stuff going on that day. The amphitheater, or no, the main venue is going to be full. So initially, he had talked about doing it in one of the pavilions. We just, there's just more people over there than we really can probably hold at that time. So I said, if you're going to keep it on the day, we probably need to move to another place. So he's requesting a fee waiver to use the Mystic Gardens area, which, that might just be what that thing's called. It's just a soccer field, up on the southeast corner of the complex.
You said it enough, that's how I...
That's what I, if you went to the Fantasy Fair, you know where the Mystic Gardens is, so, anyway. So he's requesting a fee waiver for the rental of that area. We usually charge the same as we would for a soccer field. And then he's looking to do some bounce houses, and some food vendors, that kind of stuff. So from a logistics standpoint, you know, the food vendors have to follow all of our rules, they have to bring in their own power. And then the rest of the event's kind of up to him and to you guys, whether, whether you feel like that would be a valuable event for that day or not.
I noticed on the back, it said power, whatever. Cleanup. Need to provide own generators for power, we'll need to provide porta-potties.
Yeah.
And we'll need to clean up all the trash and stuff.
Yes, and we'll provide garbage bags and stuff for them, but then they usually just bag it up for us, so.
This is the first time I've heard of this, and we get a lot of people coming in and asking, just because you're a 401(c)(3) doesn't mean that we just give everything away either. So tell me a little bit about your organization, and what you're planning, and what the future is.
So future state is 50-bed facility for mental health and substance abuse in adolescents. We're going to have on-staff nursing, psychological, we'll do a bunch of trade school also. Goal is to have a trade school, shop into it, a rec center, education, so these kids can continue to be in school, be inpatient outpatient, as well as a CPS holding facility, and transitional housing for struggling youth, suicide rooms, crisis center. It's really, the goal is to be an all-in facility for our youth that are struggling.
And where's this going, and what's your timeline?
I've, I'm looking at some property on American Road, is kind of where I'm leaning. There's a 12-acre plot up there that I'm looking at, and my goal would be 18 months. We just submitted an application for a 501(c)(3) bond that would cover the cost of that. If that doesn't go through, my goal will be to just purchase a few homes and start small, and then gradually build into that 50-bed facility.
So it doesn't sound like there's going to be admittance, a fee for admittance to the event that they're going to have with the bounce houses. However, there would be open fundraiser opportunities for people if they wanted to donate, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, so we're going to do a silent auction, open fundraising. Really, the goal is to get what we're doing out there into the public, let the public know, and the community know, hey, this is what we're doing, this is what we're bringing, this is what we're offering, this is upcoming, we'd like to get the community's support, we'd like to have the community involved. I don't believe something like this works without community involvement. And I believe the community itself can really benefit from it with our youth.
So where are you located now?
I'm not loca, I don't have a facility open. This is the beginning, so I got approved as the 501(c)(3). I've been working through all the policies, procedures, and doing all of that. This isn't, let me back up a little bit, this isn't my full-time job, this is just something that's in my heart that I've been working on for about three years. Now I'm just finally starting to gain some traction and getting it moving into an actual tangible item, and this is the very, very beginning stages. So I do not have a facility at this current moment. That is part of what the fundraising is for, is to help generate some funds to get that. I work a day job, my wife works a day job, we've got six kids, this is something I do above and beyond my day job. So it's taken some time to build, but I don't, that's kind of where we're at with it.
If I may, where you're near, do we have insurance?
It's part of the contract.
Yeah.
So we haven't got, we haven't got that yet, but it's a requirement of the contract.
Yeah, I've got the plan already set up, I've just got, once we isolate the location, I got to go and give them the location, pay the fee, and then it'll be the million-dollar policy for the day of the event.
Thank you.
My question would be, what is the impact on our staff or facilities by allowing this fundraiser to take in that, if the request is to waive, you know, any fees there, do we have any other impact fees that is going to, are we going to have to help set up anything?
No, we won't set up, but we will, we will, you know, have empty garbage, we'll end up having to shut down sprinklers for any of these events, we have to shut down the sprinklers for a day or two, which, I mean, you can tell when we've had events, because we'll dry out right now in a day or two. So we'll shut down sprinklers for a day or two for the event. And then usually we'll kind of act as support, so if the garbages are overflowing, they'll call us and we'll run up some more garbage bags or something to them, but usually it's pretty hands-off. It's like a pavilion rental for us, where, you know, we try to have a clean when they show up, and then, and then they go from there. And typically, I think, I think the biggest impact for stuff like this for us is, we do have a lot of requests for fundraisers, right? And typically, what I will do is like, I will have a certain checklist, does it fit into our schedule, how well does it work? But I don't really ever, I'm not choosing who, which fundraisers win or lose, right? The reality is, if it's on our, on our property, people will also associate that stuff with the county. So I think that that's something that we just have to mean, and this is, this sounds like a good cause, but that's the only thing. So it doesn't impact us, it just, it might just impact the county.
My own, my issue is, we don't have any track record. I mean, we're basically having to go on your vision, your promise, everything else, and I don't necessarily have a problem trying at a one-time shot to not stand in the way of something that's wonderful and good, but you're probably swimming upstream, I'm going to be real honest with you.
Oh, I know, that's all right.
They're hard to get going.
It is, it's, I've been, honestly, I've been working on this for three years behind the scenes.
Yeah.
And it's finally starting to get there, and I know it's going to be an uphill battle, I know it's going to be a fight every step of the way. You know, my pockets aren't bottomless, so I can't just go drop $50 million and be done with, with things, right? It's going to take a lot of work, but I think it's needed, my heart's in it, and I'm going to make sure it happens, no matter what it takes, so.
So, I'm okay probably with a one-time shot, just if the impact is minimal, and it's not interfering with any of other, other busy little schedule or whatever, you know, if we can work on it. Other, because we just don't have a track record, we just don't...
Well, and this day, Mike, like this is the same day as Ben Tivett's big event, this is the same day as Old Dominion, like, this is a day that I will not have, I just don't have staff for it. But that's one of the reasons I moved it out of, we had to say no to the pavilions, is I just can't have more people on that side. I think we ran into a real issue when we over, overpack. I mean, we've been there in Friday Night Lights, when we've had Friday Night Lights and the concert, it's just really, really tough. Because initially, they wanted to use the championship field for some of the bounce house stuff. So this is a solution to try to move it out, but really, from a support standpoint for my staff, like, there's going to be a little amount of support for this event, because we just can't.
We'll handle all setup, cleanup, trash, we'll make sure it's left in perfect condition.
Which only gives us your promise.
Yes, you're, no, you're absolutely right.
Is, I guess my question of it is, is there an amount that we can agree on that you'd actually just post in order for us to waive this fee and say, fine, if you meet the following condition, you'll get that fee back?
What's that fee look like?
I don't know. Well, the other hand is, if we did, I mean, we're going on your promise that you're going to clean up, that you're not, it's not going to interfere with other stuff.
A cleaning deposit.
Cleaning, yeah, a cleaning deposit or use, and say, fine, I'll be willing to post this much money up, if I meet all these conditions and it signs off on it, then we waive the fee for, you know, put the deposit back. That way...
I'm willing to entertain anything, honestly, I'm just trying to get my foot in the door, and I know I got to prove myself, you guys don't know me at all, right? I'm sure you know a lot of people who just come in here and talk.
I'm not questioning your integrity, but on the other hand, we're protecting the assets of Bannock County.
Right.
So I, if there was a fee that you'd be willing to put up as a deposit, if the conditions are met, and that doesn't really cause us any other stuff, then, you know, we could return that, just a hundred bucks. Yeah, I'm okay with that.
I don't think we ought to do it for that date. I mean, Scott, you said it's staff is 100%, but the ropings and stuff like that, they come up into that parking lot, too many events at one time. I just, I don't think our staff should have the obligation of trying to take care of it on that day, maybe another day, but, but I don't want to overwork our, you know, overcommit our staff.
I had concerns about that as well. Are you locked in on that date?
I mean, they're, not 100% locked in, I've got a lot of things planned around that date, that's kind of where we were set, I was like, right before school starts was kind of the division on that. If there's other dates that meet better, I can, I mean, nothing's set in stone that I can't change.
August 16th, is that a weekend?
Yeah, it's Saturday.
That is, we go three concerts in a row.
Right. Could you move it back a week, or would that interfere with school and stuff like that?
No, I, school, I believe school starts the following Wednesday, 'cause I think it's like the 21st or something like that.
Would that work better for you, Scott, if we moved it back?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, that, that weekend's pretty rough for us. But like, if a field's available to rent, like, I, I don't feel like I can say no, I mean, sometimes I'll.
But that's it, we're not renting, we're giving away, and, and like I say, you got three concerts, you got the roping, you got, and your staff, I mean.
And you're getting ready to move.
We are gonna be moving the next week, sure.
That's just the way I feel.
If you could move it back a week.
What, what date would that be? Be the, what's that?
23rd.
23rd.
The 23rd, August 23rd?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you could do that and do the $100 deposit, get that back, I would be okay with that. In fact, I'll make that motion, if we can move it back a week and do the $100 deposit, I would move that, we would approve the request as discussed. Any discussion?
I'm okay with that.
It's discussion time.
I'm gonna vote no, but go ahead.
Well, is there something that would be better for you?
No, I just, I just, I don't, I don't have the best feelings, just plain simple.
Okay, does that work for you, Scott, if we do that? Okay, we have a motion, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, there you go. So we'll move the, why don't you get us the corrected date, or actually, I can just change it on here?
Yeah, I just changed the date.
Okay.
And then we can just put the.
So that's August 23rd?
Yep.
And then note the $100 refundable deposit. Where would you put that?
Same place, but the notes were on the right back.
Something for the board to keep in mind, if we do a refundable deposit, we'll have to receive the money in and then use budget authority to return those dollars. And that's not something in, in the past that we've normally budgeted for, so keep that in mind. It's only $100, but still, if we do, if we make a practice of this, that could have some impact.
Hold the check and tear it up.
It could be something that we want to, maybe want to discuss in the future.
Yeah.
Because like, when people rent, be building or something like that, rent our buildings, there should be a deposit, there should be a cleaning deposit.
Well, we're getting more and more people that want fee waivers too. And we have no protection against somebody inadvertently tearing something down.
With the event center down, even if you do something.
Yeah, we're talking budget just a little bit.
All the same, something we should probably address for the use of our facilities.
Alright, Scott, tractor.
Tractor, so when I presented my budget to you guys earlier, I talked about this tractor. We have, this weekend is kind of a big weekend, I hoped that we wouldn't have any issues, but the alternator went out last night, yesterday while we were mowing with it. I've been trying to find a replacement, not a replacement alternator. I've ordered a replacement alternator, hopefully it will be overnighted. There, there's a lot of discussion points that kind of stem out from this, just, just so you know, a lot of issues that kind of come out of this one, but anyway, maybe we'll have an alternator, maybe we won't, but it's also leaking oil out of the turbo, and it's right, so if it sucks that oil in, it can send the, send the tractor just rolling. That was something that the mechanics talked to us about yesterday as well. And so, I tried to find a rental to see if I could find something to rent, there's not a lot of rentals out there for the tractor the size that we need. I know we had, I talked to Chrissy and just mentioned it briefly, and so I don't know if there's an option for us to try to just replace the tractor, and if so, if we could replace it sooner than later, I think that would be a better option for us. I think that I have more, I'm gonna have more people interested in getting us a used tractor for us to try for the week than they are gonna try to get us a rental, because it's the 4th of July, nobody's, nobody's here. So trying to get somebody to get that tractor delivered is gonna be a challenge to us, so.
The other issue is Roden Bridge's shop is not at full staff this weekend?
Um, so, I, I gotta say, the Roden Bridge guys have been fantastic to work with. Like, their mechanics came up last night after they got off work. The guys told me, if you, if you can get the alternator, we'll come up and replace it. But as a county fleet services, as a county fleet management, Roden Bridge is set up to handle the stuff that happens during the time that they're there. We, we run all weekend long, that's when all of our problems happen. And, and right now, Jason and Buddy get called 99 times out of 100 on the weekend for any mechanical issues that we've got. And so, with it being a holiday week, I know they're burned through their overtime like nobody's business. We don't have a line for mechanic overtime. But I, I think that as, as we move more towards a true fleet services, there's just gotta be a discussion about how we handle things, when my world is the weekends. My world's weekends and holidays, right? And so, in a week like this, you know, they're, all those guys work Monday through Thursday as their normal days, Friday's a holiday, so they're gonna take Thursday for a holiday, so most of the, most of the shops closed today even. So if we get an alternator in, we're gonna be putting it in, so, which, not that challenging, but.
Well, I think there's two different discussions, I do agree, we need to fix it long-term.
Sure.
Figure out what we do, but meanwhile, what do we do for this weekend? If we need to, if we need to rent a tractor, what are options? If we do have a, a company that said, fine, we'll furnish you one if we, you might think, I don't have a problem with that, but that's a, that's an immediate issue that we need to solve. The other one with the fleet management, I think we need to take our time and look at that and see budgeting.
And I, and I just, that was something that Jeff had brought up, that's why I just spoke to him. And I've talked to, again, this is not, I'm not throwing any rocks at anybody, these guys have been fantastic to work with. As a matter of fact, I've had Jason up on the weekends many times and just said like, who, who's your on-call guy? And he says, I'm the on-call guy, you know, I mean, so we got the shop lead coming in, keeping us running. We had a water truck go down last weekend, alternator blew out on that. And they got us another water truck, had guys up there to fix it, so. But again, we put a lot of use on our equipment on the weekends, so.
Well, you had a conversation with them yesterday, and if we're sucking oil into that turbo, I don't want to run that tractor and burn it up, blow it up. I mean, that, that takes any value that we get out of it at all away, so. I don't know about funds, but we have to do something there.
We have 250,000, or 200,000 budgeted for the Bannock County events, which is more the concert side. We've only obligated 63,000 of that. Maybe what we could do is purchase a tractor out of those funds this year and then just replenish them next year back towards the Bannock County events. The other option would be, we haven't done anything with contingency, at least we're into July now, but I'm not sure that we would have a need for those at this point, because we've got a couple other options if something came up. So we could just budget it out of general fund contingency as well. There's 200,000 there.
What are you talking, 100?
I, I requested 80, trying to find a used tractor, but I, I don't even know what, I mean, a used tractor's gonna run anywhere between, for the, we need 115 horsepower is where we're at right now. High School Rodeo brought up a 100 horsepower tractor to run the groomers that we're running, and they, and they did not perform well. So, the tractor that we lease is 145 horsepower, that tractor knew those are $250,000. So I'm hoping a used 115 is in that, probably the 80, 100,000.
I'd say, talk to people, kind of see what the, the price is and see what you can get out of this one.
Mm-hmm.
And, but, we have to do something, and like I say, if you, if somebody will bring it around, 'cause we're talking about purchasing it and let you utilize it this weekend, we can talk more about numbers on Tuesday, the actual numbers and where to pull the money from, is what my suggestion would be.
The other thing is, we got Pilt money, it came in at just over 600,000, only budgeted five. So if we had to dip into those as well.
I think we can find the money, we just need to find the tractor. And I'm all for, if we can get a good used one, that, you know, I don't think we need a brand-new one sitting up there. But I guess that you'll have, you're gonna have to help us here, find something and.
So if we're, if we're gonna use tractor, like, I, I'm, I will try to negotiate a trial before we, we're obligated to buy, because like, I gotta have Jason go through it, right? Like, we've gotta have the Roden Bridge guys sign off on that this is a good deal for us. 'Cause they're the ones that are working on it, and I think that's, like, that's worked out well for us in the past, that, you know, Jason went out and checked all our mowers and told us, this is the mower to buy, right? We wanna, we wanna make sure that we're supporting what they're gonna support. So if I can work that deal to get a trial on the used one, I'll try to do that. And then I'll, I'll get back this end of the calendar.
Well, my concern is, you guys are operating on a lot of hand-me-down equipment that is old to begin with. And I, I look at this as a 10-year purchase on a tractor, so don't get the bare minimum to scrape by. Get something that's gonna be big enough and powerful enough that it will last 10 years and, and do what we need and help grow with us, 'cause we, we've gotta quit the hand-me-down to this place, because you guys use it hard, and again, it's six months of the year, but that is a hard six months that you guys put on it. So if you can find a good used one that's maybe a little bit bigger, that will last longer because it's bigger.
Not overworking it.
So this, this tractor, this tractor works 12 months out of the year, because we give back our lease. So this is our primary tractor, and you know, as you guys know, we rent the indoor rent a year-round. So we, it works 12 months out of the year.
Then look for something big enough, like the lawnmowers. Get, get something that's big enough to handle it for 10 years and let's go from there.
And even if you're comparing new ones.
And it'll take the pressure off of Jason and the staff out there too. We don't need to just keep having that same thing, go in there every week on a weekend. And, 'cause it'll save money in overtime or the long haul, I, do it right. If there's a good one with few hours on it, I'm okay with that, but, you know, see what you can do.
Okay, bring us some information on Tuesday then.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matthew.
Matthew Phillips, HR Director. Just real quickly, is an agreement here with, between Gem Plan and Blue Cross of Idaho to be their TPA. It is actually ratifying it, I didn't get it until about a month ago, and then it went through our legal review, which they were fine with. I've expressed to Gem Plan, I would love to get these before the plan year, but I guess they have to negotiate things with Blue Cross attorneys. I also included in there that there's been a new pharmacy transparency bill, which we'll probably also make next year's agreement late too, because it'll have to go through a whole bunch of legal review with Blue Cross. So I'm bringing it to you to sign and ratify. It doesn't mean that Blue Cross isn't still administering our plan, they are, but this is just making sure that we have the agreement on file for 2024 as plan year.
Okay, Commissioner Mezner, is our Gem Plan representative?
Yeah, how come you signed it in August or April 23rd, we're just getting.
I, I, again, I just got it myself. I just got it myself.
I'm sure there's a reason.
About a month and a half ago, I sent it through legal.
Oh, I got a 423 on this one, yeah.
It, it passes through several people for signature.
I knew that.
I, I've asked them if there's any.
That board has proven it.
We, we just have to take the opportunity to poke a bird.
As chairman of that board, that's when I signed it.
Okay.
And then it goes through the other process.
We're just poking a bear, so.
So you feel like it's a good thing?
Yes, honestly, I think Gem Plan does a great job.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that though. With that, I'll make the motion, or we go ahead and accept this proposal, this contract with Gem Plan?
Gem Plan. Okay, we have a motion, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Shanda. And the clock is ticking, so no pressure.
She runs.
Good morning, Commissioner Shanda Crystal, Chief Rec. Officer. I have two items before the board today. The first, I am requesting a signature for a contract with Booth Architecture for the design services for the roof. If you'll flip back to the very last page, I just want to point out that this contract is proposing a fixed fee of 5% on the re-roofing construction costs, where we don't know exactly what that is, that is why we put the do not exceed $49,000. We don't anticipate it getting up there, but we did want to leave room where we didn't know what the project was going to entail. However, our current budgeted construction costs are $500,000. 5% of that $500,000 would leave you at about $25,000. So that is way closer to where I feel that the final bill is going to come in. But until they actually meet with, if this is approved, meet with Roden Bridge, understand the project, go out to bid for the project, then we can come back to the board with much closer final numbers for that. But I would recommend that the board sign the contract with Booth Architectural Services for, to re-roof the Roden Bridge shop area as an amount to not to exceed $49,000.
My only concern with this is making sure that they plan ahead for the potential remodel that we're talking about doing out there.
Correct, right, their current thought is that it will not interfere or interface with it, but that is part of the discussion.
Okay.
As far as what those plans may or may not entail going into the future.
And something to keep in mind, the budget is 500,000. So if the project comes in at 500, we're automatically gonna be over by this architectural fee. So, but we'll know when they get their work done, so.
And this is just a simple layman's question, 'cause it understands, do we need, why do we need an architect just to re-roof it?
To re-roof it, so that's by law. Anything that's gonna change that structural integrity of the building, extending the useful life of that building, requires that we go in and engineer to make sure that it's safe for humans to go in and out. So it's by law that it's required.
Okay.
More rules.
Any discussion on, any other questions for Shanda on that?
No.
Okay.
Make the motion, or we go ahead and sign the agreement with Booth.
All right, we have a motion, any further discussion? Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Decide the discussions then, yeah.
They will get their notice to proceed today, and we will have it, get, start getting it ready to bid. They anticipate being completed that first week of August, so we wanted to move that along. The second item are hearing updates. I did want to make, I reported to the board a few months ago about the adjustment in legislature that was going to come into effect July 1st, we are now at July 3rd, so those have taken place. Those have made adjustments to Idaho Code 67-2803, 05, and 06. The biggest point for the county is that it's adjusted our limits for formal and informal. The first threshold we need to start looking at, except for design services, which will remain at 50 for now, is $100,000, and then 250 is what they moved into. So that is one thing that I touched base with Jake as they were leaving. While a new piece of equipment might benefit the exit, or the event center, it will slow down their process, 'cause they're looking at more than $100,000. But used, they are exempt, and they can purchase freely on that account. So I just let Jake know that as they go back and have their discussions and look for, for items there. As far as the dashboard goes, the facilities, the janitorial services, we went out to bid two years ago for janitorial services, and that contract will be up at the end of September, right? Dan also gave me that face, that, it's been two years already.
Mine goes so quick.
So we are beginning drafting that, but Christie brought up a great point. The timing that we have that starting at the beginning of the fiscal year is super difficult for budget. So when we go out to do this one, we're going to go out for a three and a half year. We're gonna put that break about six months in, so then we have a contract. As Dan goes and submits his budget request, he'll know what dollar amounts we're looking for. So that will fix that in, and I appreciate that note, 'cause we just lined it up with the fiscal year and on we went and not considering budget, which is a huge piece, right? We do anticipate this going live on the 18th, and again, contract services will start October 1st for this one. The landfill scale house is moving forward, we anticipate that one being live the end of the month. Roden Bridge Construction Project, the GeoTech proposals, I'm still waiting on one of them, but I do anticipate getting those back before the board on Tuesday for review. I did wonder if we are ready to go out for qualifications for an architectural design on that, or if there's additional internal conversations that we need to have before we proceed with a design team.
I think that we need a little more conversation, myself, emergency management. We haven't come up with any solution, and they weren't included in this to start with, so I think that we need a little conversation to plan the future.
And where we're looking for a springtime on this, I think we've got time to have that conversation, so let's do something maybe towards the end of the month and have that conversation, so that doesn't put us off. So that doesn't put us off hugely, but at least we have time for that conversation, which I think is valid.
I think that would be great. I do want to say that as, when we get that design professional on board, they might have additional solutions or proposals for us that we might not have considered before. But I do want to align it closer to when internally we've got comfortable.
You sent out that email about lessons learned and having that conversation. I think that we've had major projects and so we need to kind of float that in there too. What have we learned from each others that we're missing? What are we thinking about?
Yep, I did send that.
I totally agree. I, I've always realized if it's right today, it's right two weeks from now. Sometimes there's that extra review period to make sure we got everything lined up because things come back to roost. So I'm okay with a little longer discussion on that.
Okay.
That is perfect. And that's all I have unless the board has questions.
No questions, thank you. Christie?
This will be quick.
And the clock is ticking.
Chris Plaza, Controller. I provided the board with sheets in an email. Here is a new copy. It's a little bit bigger, but also at the bottom. Also at the bottom to give comparisons, we provided how much capital we did last year. So as quick review, we've got the new positions that were requested, which there were three. We've got two current positions that were proposed to vacate. If all three positions were approved, that would only be one new position, or we could discuss options. Then we've got the grade adjustments and promotion requests. In the next session, other payroll items to discuss, reactivating the senior deputy treasurer, increases for the sheriff's office, the PTO. Law enforcement no longer doing one step for one year and passing post. However, probation is still doing that. And then there needs to be additional discussion on the landfill mechanic. I think that threw a couple of our departments off and possibly created, created some anxiety on making that transition. So we've talked about possibly splitting that position instead of just doing away with it. And I'm not sure what that split would look like, but we can work through that. And the clerk's recommendation, unless the board wants to have that discussion before we start our, our recommendation. B budget items to discuss, historical wants 52% more in their operating budget. That's a big ask. Donations, do we want to keep the existing budgets? Are there any cutbacks? Are there any additions to Veterans Memorial? What's that budget going to look like? Fair inventory through budget discussions. We talked about, we probably should budget maybe $5,000 for replacement items. There's going to be broken chairs, tables, any kitchen equipment. We're going to come up with an inventory, but if something comes up missing that we can't track back who, where it went, we'll need to replace those items. Maintenance, we need to probably add a 10% contingency into a line item in there for some unknowns that might be coming up in next year's budget. And then admin fees. Last year, we waived the admin fee for D6 and for the Bannock County events. Just wanted to bring that up. Hopefully we can get those back. And then there could potentially be security improvements that need to be made with the new metal detectors and some possible improvements now that those are in place. There might be some additional monies that we need to budget there.
We've got to build a dressing room around there now. They're actually coming in our office and putting their belts on right in front of Christie.
That, that could potentially be some security improvements that we need to talk about.
I'm actually going to have a meeting with Tony and the judges and some of the other staff next week to talk about. Do one of you want to come to that?
The sensitivity.
We're going to be gone after?
What day?
Thursday.
Whenever Tony can.
If you do it before Thursday, I'll.
Okay, I'll let you know.
Because I went to Power County and Beacon County last week and didn't have to take my belt off.
I know.
So that was some of the discussion that we.
Okay.
Well, and on jury days, holy cow, talk about, it just slows everything down. So I agree that we could tweak that a little bit.
And we actually have some security money in district court that we could just roll forward for that project. We just need a cost. And then here's your list of projects. When you look at the fleet vehicles, most of the vehicles are included in that, but there might be a couple that are outside that scope. For context, we did have a couple really large projects that were requested. And so at the bottom of that, that's why I wanted to put what we approved in a point 25. And we had a couple large projects in there as well. So of the 9 million budgeted this year, 4 million was for the scale house. A million was in PILT for overages for ARPA. So to put that into context. Another quick item that we would like to bring up is we presented the budget calendar to the board, and that's always a fluid document that can potentially change. Our office isn't going to have valuations until July 21st. So we were hoping to push back the clerk recommendation to possibly the 24th instead of the 21st, so that we have better numbers and make sure that the property tax amounts are going to be more set rather than working with estimates. Anita does a great job of getting those numbers to me, but it would just allow a little bit more flexibility if we could push that date back. So I wanted to see if the board was okay with that. It would take a few days of commission meetings away if we pushed that forward, but we would still have the week of the 28th and then a final budget on the 4th. And that's pretty close to what we did last year, because we only had about a week last year.
With our communication back and forth, I don't have any problem.
I don't either. No, I think that's fine. And thank you so much for your work on this sheet. This was great. Appreciate it that.
I'll do, I'll adjust that calendar and then I'll forward it to Christie to share with you. And then we'll also share that with departments so that they know it's going to be a little bit late.
And I'll just tell you, in my opinion, with the nonprofits, we're still going to have some conversation if that's going to be the full amount that we give.
Especially that first one under the B budget discussion.
With the veterans, I, I'm still not set on what value we would end up giving there, but.
So those are the things that the clerk has to work.
Yeah, we'll work through that a little bit.
On regards to that, what if each of us kind of sent to the clerk our thoughts on the donations? So you can factor that in and maybe that would save us a little bit of a discussion.
The other thing that I thought might be helpful, because I don't really care which way it goes and it's your department's, is the mechanic situation and how that splits out.
And I wasn't here for that conversation, but my concern was what funds are he coming out of now?
Landfill.
Is it out of landfill? And if we take that away, are we losing the ability to pull it out of landfill?
Yes, but if we split it, then you would just lose a portion.
Right.
So say we do a 60/40 split or a 50/50 split.
But even if we moved it and paid for it out of landfill, it still wouldn't have a tax effect.
Well, if we added, so what we had discussed is we would add a shop charge. So say the position, and I'm just going to throw rough numbers. Say the position is 100,000 with benefits, and we added a shop charge of an amount, it would offset that 100,000. So yes, there will be a tax change unless we did a shop charge of the full amount.
And that's my only concern is, is right now we're paying that out of landfill fees.
Right.
Under, and we're going to start taking money out of general tax fund.
Which yes, you would, if we make that transition.
Yeah, I think there's some more discussion there, just to see what the accounting, actually the effects that's going to be. Manpower is where it is. It's just the accounting of it.
And of course, the clerk's recommendation will be a balanced budget. So whatever comes before the board will be funded and match, so.
So in addition to what Jeff just said, that I think there's issues on both sides of this pages that I would welcome. I think all three of us should at least, since we're not going to have a meeting, not to slow you down, send some comments on, on both sides of this page.
So I sent that to you in Excel. You could do an easy highlight of once. Just give me, just give me a key so that I know.
What you mean with it?
Yeah. And then if you want to send that, if we could have it maybe by Tuesday, Wednesday, the latest.
Yeah, Monday.
Easy though.
My plan is to work through the steps and work through updating some salary information through the weekend and then get the revest done, get the revenues caught up, and then catch up ARPA, so that we'll have all of those items so that we can start working on the budget next week.
Okay, thank you. All right, and just real quick, could we, supposed to move into BOE real quick, but any, any discussion on the claims agenda?
I'll make motion that we accept.
I do have a discussion.
There is some discussion.
Well, and you may not have saw the bills that were in here. But through the emergency management, we paid for lunches for two different events down in Downey. We paid for shirts, and then we're putting a booth in.
Neighborhood Works.
Neighborhood Works Turb Homes for $500. And I just don't think that that's the appropriate reason that that money is there. I know the money comes from a grant, from Homeland Security and stuff, but I still don't believe that we just go have a booth at Neighborhood Works and stuff of that nature. I just have, you know, as I went through that this morning, I know others have different opinions, but, but I just feel like that justification for spending, you don't just go spend just because we have money.
It's easy to spend other people's money. That's the federal government right there.
I guess my question of it is, was it, was it originally budgeted, the annual budget?
So these are Homeland Security monies, and that's a little hard to gauge.
Wasn't budgeted.
Not those specific things.
I guess I, I don't agree with micromanaging departments' funds if it's been budgeted. But if it hasn't been budgeted or isolated, then they probably need some oversight.
Because these are grant funds, you don't get line out of budgets. So you don't know specifically that it's being paid for tables and stuff like that.
And on the opposite side of the argument from Commissioner Moser, I believe in the outreach and emergency preparedness and helping with that. Like the fire, the fire training, that was supporting South Valley Fire and providing, helping with that training. So that's where some of the discussion comes from.
There is a fire association that could assist with training firefighters as an option that maybe Homeland Security funds could subsidize but not be the sole source for.
Well, in, in hearing the report from the fire district about their attendance, because of our involvement, their attendance was five times greater than it has been in the past. So anyway, I felt like it was a success and worth doing. So with that, any further discussion on claims agenda? You want to keep going?
No.
Okay.
You don't.
Everybody knows how I feel. It's on the record.
I wish you wouldn't hold back.
All right, so we have a motion to accept the claims agenda. Any further discussion on that?
No.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll do that. Let's take a quick, like, three-minute recess and then we'll begin.